I'm Oxnard Police Chief Jason Benitez and this presentation concerns a public hearing at the April 19th, 2022, Oxnard City Council meeting. The subject concerns the introduction of a city ordinance that establishes a military equipment use policy for the police department. The recommendation before the council is that the city council conduct a public hearing for the purpose of introducing for the first reading by title only and waiving further reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 7 of the Oxnard City Code that is entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oxnard Amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 7 to the Oxnard City Code Governing the Use of Military Equipment by the Police Department." In this presentation and the agenda item, we will address the background and purpose of this new legislation that has put us here this evening. It is known as Assembly Bill 481, also referred to as AB 481, and is now currently manifests itself in the government code under Section 7070 at SecuDor. The presentation here also covers the definition of military equipment as AB 481's definition of military equipment extends beyond that which is typically associated with equipment that comes from the military, so there's a lot more to that. We will also discuss the types of equipment in Oxnard Police Department's inventory that qualifies as military equipment in the eyes of AB 481. Attached to this staff report for this presentation, you will also find the policy, which is known as Policy Manual Section 708, which also includes the police department's current inventory of equipment that qualifies as AB 481's definition of military equipment. It also includes property not only that the Oxnard Police Department may possess at this time, but is also required to indicate equipment that it is also seeking. I will also discuss the pending annual report requirement as well as the community engagement requirement and requirement to make materials related to AB 481 accessible to the public. So I believe that it is very important for our city council as well as members of our community to understand the nature of this new legislation, its many requirements, as well as the implications that it has for law enforcement agencies that serve them. This is, this applies to a sweeping number of law enforcement agencies across the state, Oxnard being no exception. The equipment that we will discuss, I feel it's very important for the police department to make every effort to demystify what types of equipment we have in our inventories. So in order to see where we are today, we need to take a look back. And in looking at this, over the course of the past several years, criticism and debate has spread across the nation concerning the perception of policing in America becoming militarized. A key part of this discussion centers around the use of military equipment by law enforcement agencies, referred to in this presentation at times as LEAs, including the regulation and accountability for agencies that use such equipment. This includes the funding, the acquisition, and the use of this equipment by LEAs. Over the past several decades, many law enforcement agencies across the United States acquired a variety of military surplus equipment from the federal government and incorporated their use into their operations. The federal program that currently hosts this is the Defense Logistics Agency's 1033 Program. Other forms of this program included the former Defense Reutilization Marketing Office. It's referred to as Dermo. Generally speaking, the equipment furnished to LEAs was intended to be necessary or beneficial to operations, intended to improve the safety of officers as well as the public, and help agencies acquire such equipment, especially in the face of limited budget. The materials provided by these programs were very diverse and included items ranging from office furniture and equipment to gas masks, to rifles, to binoculars, to vehicles. These programs also furnish civilian-type vehicles as well as the military-purpose ones known as the HUMBs. In this slide, you can see a picture of a HUMBee in the lower right. At some point in the past two decades, larger 12th or more ton mine-resistant ambush-protected armored vehicles known as MRAPs were also furnished to a number of law enforcement agencies across the country. In previous years, the Oxnard Police Department accepted a limited variety of items, including M17 gas masks like the type you see in this slide, older-generation rifles typically post-Vietnam-era rifles, and rifle optics. These items have since been eliminated from the department's inventory. And for the record, the Oxnard Police Department has never requested nor received HUMBs or the MRAP-style armored vehicles. It is also important for me to emphasize that the Oxnard Police Department no longer obtains equipment from either of these programs. A little bit about 481. On September 30th, 2021, Governor Gavin Newsom signed legislation aimed at reforming law enforcement agencies' funding, acquisition, and use of specific types of quote-unquote "military equipment." This legislation, referred to as Assembly Bill 481 or AB 481, was authored by Assembly Member David Chu to address and regulate the funding, acquisition, and use of military equipment by LEAs. For the purpose of this legislation, LEAs include any of the following: police departments, sheriff's departments, district attorney office, and county probation departments. Of note, AB 481 does not apply to federal LEAs. Now, effective on January 1st of this year, AB 481 is codified in Government Code Sections 7070 through 7075. AB 481 obliges LEAs to obtain approval from their applicable governing body by adoption of a military-use policy by ordinance prior to the law enforcement agency's ability to fund, acquire, or use such equipment. For simplicity, I will refer to the terms "the policy" and "the ordinance" in this presentation at times. LEAs must begin the process to have their governing body, in this case, the Oxnard City Council, start the process for this no later than May 1st, 2022. This means a few things. The police department must develop a department policy that governs its use of military equipment. This policy must also include an inventory of those items or material that is deemed by AB 481 as being quote-unquote "military equipment." As it stands at the time of this report, the policy can be found in the Oxnard Police Department's Policy Manual, Section 708. This policy is required to be posted on a department's website. In this case, it is currently posted as of March 3rd on the Oxnard Police Department's website. You see the hyperlink there to OxnardPD.org on the main page. Under the main menu, there is a tab Transparency, and under that you will find AB 481. Another important note is that any future acquisitions of any item deemed by AB 481 to be quote-unquote "military equipment" will require a further public meeting, policy update, and the council approval. Law enforcement agencies must produce and submit an annual report to their governing body. In this case, it would, the first report coming from us would be anticipated in the spring of 2023. Each year, the governing body will receive that report, they will review the ordinance, they will review the policy, and then they will either approve or disapprove a renewal of the authorization for a type of military equipment or modify the military equipment use policy. Prior to submitting the annual report to the city council, the police department must also hold at least one community engagement meeting within 30 days of submitting the annual military equipment report to the council. So let's start off by looking at what the definitions of military equipment is. AB 481's definition of military equipment extends beyond equipment that has a clear default to military use. This is currently codified in Government Code Section 7070, see subsections 1 through 15. And under this, the term more broadly applies to 15 categories of equipment types. For intents and purposes of AB 481, this broad descriptor or categories of equipment type includes some equipment which is not typically used by the U.S. Armed Forces. Other items deemed to be military equipment per AB 481 include equipment such as rifles and unmanned aerial systems, also known as drones, that are also available to the public by retail sale. In this presentation, I will provide you with an overview of each of these 15 categories as it is very important for the public to hear and know as much as possible about this equipment and how they are of great importance to the safety of others as well as the public that we serve. The first category: Unmanned Remotely Piloted Powered Aerial or Ground Vehicle. In this picture, you see on the left, this is the Oxnard Police Department's drone. You can see our two operators from the department, and this is the type of drone that we use in our operations. The Oxnard Police Department has been deploying unmanned aerial systems, also known as UAS, since 2019. As you may recall, I've done a number of presentations in a variety of public forums to discuss our intended uses and restrictions and policies that apply to this. On the subject of UAS, they are easily deployed and they can have a wide variety of utility for us as they can perform many functions that a helicopter would serve and can do so at a fraction of the cost. UAS have demonstrated their value to public safety and have become increasingly more necessary as they can provide visibility and overwatch at high-risk locations or incidents. They can assist officers in perimeter searches, they can increase the possibility that an outstanding suspect can be safely located. UAS are also designed to enter small spaces such as enclosed structures, as well as to provide overhead observations in wooded areas and other structures located in often crowded spaces. They are also useful in documenting crime scenes and traffic collision scenes, significantly reducing the amount of time needed to accomplish this. All of the Oxnard Police Department's UAS personnel receive initial and ongoing training to operate this equipment. They must pass a certification course and must earn a certificate from the Federal Aviation Administration. All UAS flights are documented with flight logs, and the police department's policy expressly forbids arming or weaponizing such equipment. The police department has not received a single complaint about its use of UAS since their first deployment in 2019. In short, there are no reasonable alternatives that can perform the functions served by this equipment, and without the use of UAS, officers would have to more frequently place themselves into high-risk situations, which would naturally increase the risk to officers and members of the public. In looking at the photograph to the right, you see a ground vehicle, remotely piloted or remote-control ground vehicle. Unmanned ground vehicles are used for reconnaissance during critical incidents to assist in providing visibility in areas where it would be unsafe to send a person. This equipment enhances the capability of SWAT and tactical response teams by allowing them to quickly and safely inspect dangerous situations and eliminate the need to send personnel in before assessing the situation. Such systems can also be used to examine, move, or even defuse potentially hazardous items. There is no alternative to this type of system for these purposes. Not having access to this item would require the use of peace officers to engage in higher-risk On Slide 10, we have Mine-Resistant Ambush-Protected Vehicles, known as MRAPs or Armored Personnel Carriers. However, police versions of standard consumer vehicles are specifically excluded from this subdivision. And for the record, the Oxnard Police Department does have armored vehicles, however, they will be discussed in the next category. What you see here at the lower right is actually an MRAP vehicle, is a 12-plus-ton vehicle. Our department does not have such a type of vehicle, nor has ever had one. So just wanted you to see that picture to see what an MRAP actually looks like. In the next category, we have, which defines military equipment as High-Mobility Multipurpose Wheeled Vehicles, also known as the, commonly referred to as HUMBs, Two-and-One-Half-Ton Trucks, Five-Ton Trucks, or Wheeled Vehicles that have a breaching or entry apparatus attached. The Oxnard Police Department currently possesses two such armored rescue vehicles, as seen in these photos. One was acquired by purchase in 2006, and the one on the right was acquired by a donation in 2021. Armored vehicles are used to provide ballistic protection to officers and citizens during rescue, critical incidents, and other hazardous situations. The armored rescue vehicles used by the Oxnard Police Department are both from the Lenco Bearcat series and are built on a commercial vehicle chassis and are primarily reinforced civilian commercial vehicles. These are not tanks. These vehicles allow officers closer access to high-risk situations while substantially reducing the physical risk to the officers and the members of the public. They are generally deployed on SWAT operations such as the service of high-risk warrants or to incidents requiring a tactical response. They are intended to serve as a rescue vehicle in the unfortunate event of a downed officer or person in immediate dire need of rescue. Though such equipment has the ability to serve as a breaching tool, as you can see on the right, there is a breaching mechanism on the front bumper of the ARV. They are, there are no weapons that are affixed to either of these platforms. There are no reasonable alternatives that can achieve the same objectives of officer and civilian safety. As such, there are no alternatives to providing the same level of ballistic protection. I'd like to show the council as well as the public an example of one of our ARVs in action. In this photo, you see it was taken in March of 2016. There had been, a suspect had fired a handgun at one of our officers who returned fire. Nobody was hit. The suspect with the gun ran into this apartment complex that you see here, into a random apartment, taking a family by surprise who, in very concern for their safety, they retreated to an upstairs bedroom and locked the door. During this tactical operation, one of our first needs was to evacuate the family from the residence safely, and so the ARV was an outstanding tool to accomplish this. As you can see in this picture, which was taken by Ventura County Sheriff's helicopter, one of the children from the house is being evacuated from the second-story window to the roof of the ARV. They are then put in the top hatch, and then once all the family members were secure, they were driven off to safety. This incident took a few more hours past this time, and fortunately was concluded peacefully, and the suspect did surrender without any further use of force. On Slide 13, we are talking about tracked armored vehicles that provide ballistic protection to their occupants and utilize a track system instead of wheels for forward motion. The Oxnard Police Department simply does not have any equipment from this category. Slide 14 talks about command and control vehicles that are either built or modified to facilitate the operational control and direction of public safety units. The police department's mobile command post pictured at the bottom is an unarmed vehicle equivalent to a civilian commercial recreational vehicle. The department has had this piece of equipment since 2001, and it is equipped with radio communications and audiovisual equipment to assist in command and control of special events, critical and non-critical incidents, disaster scenes, and has actually been the centerpiece at a number of community engagement efforts by our city and by our department. The MCP can also serve as a backup dispatch operation in the event of a catastrophic failure at the police department's headquarters building. The vehicle also allows for mobile incident command and use of the incident command systems, facilitating the best possible near-scene decision-making. The MCP also provides mobility, sheltering, and logistical support, restroom facilities, a conference room, and electrical power. The MCP provides mobility and support at one location in a quick deploying package. Now, the photo on the upper left shows our SWAT van, which was acquired in the year 2001. It is used to carry tactical equipment, it serves as a forward tactical command post, and like its larger MCP counterpart, it also possesses radio communications equipment. Though it carries tactical gear from one location to another, it is also unarmed and has no weapons affixed to it. In the upper right, you see a smaller command vehicle. The police department possesses four smaller command vehicles. These are essentially sport utility vehicles built on an Explorer chassis that serves as forward command posts when needed. These vehicles allow for mobile incident command and use of the incident command systems as well. They facilitate the best possible near-scene decision-making. The rear portion of the vehicle's passenger compartment has an additional radio and mobile data computer as well as dry erase boards that are useful in coordinating responses to larger incidents. Three of these vehicles are currently marked as black and white patrol units, which we assign to our patrol sergeants who serve in a supervisory role. The fourth command vehicle, which you see here, is assigned to the Special Operations Division Commander. Section 6 deals with weaponized aircraft, vessels, or vehicles of any kind, and I can just say that Oxnard PD does not have equipment from this category. Next category: Battering Rams, Slugs, and Breaching Apparatuses that are explosive in nature. However, items designed to remove a lock, such as bolt cutters, or a handheld ram designed to be operated by one person are specifically excluded from this subdivision. Battering rams and breaching apparatus are used to defeat locked and barricaded or fortified locations, allowing officers to conduct rescues or high-risk forcible entries. This includes but is not limited to rescuing hostages. These items allow officers to quickly enter a structure when time is of the essence, and this would also include but is not limited to situations such as involving a kidnapping or an active shooter situation. In such cases, time is of the essence, and it would not be feasible to wait for other delayed access to the structure. Now, there are alternatives which are used for lower-risk and/or non-fortified situations. This includes handheld battering rounds, which are not deemed as military equipment by AB 481. However, this alternative does not afford the same level of protection or speed that such equipment provides when necessary. As such, there are no reasonable alternatives that can achieve the same objectives of officer and civilian safety. End of note, the only equipment that we have under this category are these breaching shotguns, and as you can see them, they're pictured here, they are exclusively used by our SWAT team, and they have to undergo special annual training and recertification in order to continue using them. These shotguns fire a shell similar to the one that you see on the right, which has a frangible projectile. When I say frangible, it's a brittle or fragile projectile such as copper or clay, and it is used against either the bolt mechanism of a door or the hinge mechanisms of a door in order to quickly defeat that. They use frangible materials to avoid the spray of any debris from the round and minimize the risk to the officers or the public. So that's an overview of that type of equipment. On Slide 16, we see Category 8, which includes firearms 50 caliber or greater. However, standard-issue shotguns are specifically excluded from this subdivision, so we do have shotguns in our inventory at the police department, but we do not have any type of firearms that are 50 caliber or greater in size. In terms of ammunition, the same case applies, ammunition of 50 caliber or greater, however, shotgun ammunition is also excluded from this subdivision. So we do have shotgun ammunition, but we do not have any ammunition 50 caliber or Specialized firearms and ammunition of less than 50 caliber, including assault weapons, as defined in Sections 30510 and 30515 of the California Penal Code, with the exception of standard-issue service weapons and ammunition of less than 50 caliber that are issued to officers, agents, or employees of a law enforcement agency or a state agency. So patrol rifles, special weapons and tactics, SWAT rifles, and sniper rifles enable officers to address medium-to-long-distance threats or those threats who are heavily armed, armored, or both. A good example of this would be in the North Hollywood bank robbery in the late 90s where the suspects had robbed a bank, and they were carrying automatic weapons, assault weapons, they were wearing heavy body armor, and had lots of ammunition in drum-type magazines. Further, in both short- and long-distance deployments, these types of rifles and weapons allow officers precision shot placement and minimizes the risk to officers and innocent citizens. So in today's world, it has become increasingly common for criminals to possess assault weapons, such as in the example I just mentioned, and law enforcement needs to, this type of equipment, just to maintain parity. You can see a couple pictures here, which are 5.5-6mm patrol rifles. They're typical of what we issue to our, to some of our officers. They have to undergo a special training course and have to undergo annual certification with those, with that same equipment. We currently deploy these rifles on a daily basis, and when I say deploy, this refers to the equipment being carried by the officers into the field in a variety of ways, such as merely carrying it secured in a police car. This rifle platform, however, is not considered to be standard-issue equipment by our department. Selected officers must complete this course that I mentioned and maintain their proficiency. Selected officers may be in a variety of assignments, ranging from patrol officers to those on our SWAT team and other specialized assignments. The rifles that we issue, they are categorized as an assault weapon under the Penal Code and have characteristics of an assault weapon as prescribed by the California Penal Code Sections that I just mentioned a minute ago. We do also possess six 308-caliber bolt-action sniper rifles. These are also of limited issue, provided only to SWAT officers who also have to undergo specialized training and qualification. All of these rifles may be deployed in circumstances where the officer can articulate a reasonable expectation of the rifle may be needed. Examples of some general guidelines for deploying these types of rifles include, but are not limited to, situations where the officer reasonably anticipates an armed encounter, when an officer is faced with a situation that may require accurate and effective fire at long range, situations where an officer reasonably expects the need to meet or exceed a suspect's firepower, when an officer reasonably believes there may be a need to fire on a barricaded person or a person with a hostage, or when an officer reasonably believes that a suspect may be wearing body armor. There are no known alternatives to these weapons that will provide the same level of distance or precision. As such, there are no reasonable alternatives that can achieve the same objectives of officer and civilian safety. The next slide, we have any firearm or firearm accessory that is designed to launch explosive projectiles. We do not possess equipment under this category. Category 12 concerns flashbang grenades and explosive breaching tools, tear gaffs, and pepper balls, and that excludes standard service-issued handheld pepper spray. And the first thing I'll have to say here is that the police department does not use any type of chemical explosives. We do not have an explosives detail, and we do not deploy explosives to breach doors or other entry points. So let's talk about flashbangs. These are used as a distraction device in order to disorient or divert a These are used as a distraction device in order to disorient or divert a suspect's attention away from officers. It's typically a flash of light followed by a high-decibel-rated sound wave, and this actually allows officers to gain safer access to a high-risk situation, as it gives them extra time to assess and analyze the existing threats. When these devices are deployed, typically the person who is on the receiving end of this is momentarily distracted, or if not disoriented, which then gives the officers some degree of initiative that they're able to take further action. As such, this can prevent injury to both officers and members of the public. These devices can lend towards a safer resolution and allow officers to take a suspect into custody without further use of force. There is no known alternative to a flashbang when one is necessary. So moving along to tear gas in this particular slide, tear gas and actually pepper ball. Tear gas, which is also known as CS gas, as you can see on the canisters in the photo here, are used, they are actually, they are less lethal rounds, that they are used to address a violent or riotous crowd when there is a risk of physical safety. They are also used to safely extract a suspect from a fixed location or safely detain a suspect who poses a risk of violence to officers. Tear gas allows peace officers to use a less lethal chemical agent into a structure where other weapons would not be capable of doing so. And these less lethal options afford peace officers an added option to avoid deadly-force encounters. And another point of order that I think is important to convey here is that the Oxnard Police Department has not deployed tear gas to address crowds in many decades. The use of this has been limited to SWAT deployments involving barricaded suspects. And on this slide, you can see up on the upper left is a forty-millimeter launcher, and you can see the projectile that can project the tear gas. The other items on the right and the top, the four canisters, those are handheld grenades that can be deployed in a variety of different ways. The photos that you see at the bottom of this slide are not from Oxnard Police Department, but I just wanted to include them to show how they are used in a variety of situations. In this particular slide, we see the pepper ball launcher, which is essentially, it's a paintball gun. It is CO2-powered, it's carbon, compressed carbon dioxide propels, a frangible, that is a fragile projectile. In this case, it is their ball-shaped munitions that contain a powder, known as PAVA, which, when it comes into contact with a hard surface, the ball breaks and the powder disperses, as you can see in the demonstration photo on the right. And this is also particularly useful in having suspects exit enclosed spaces, such as vehicles, or places such as an attic, or a closet, or something like that. Again, this is another less-lethal device that is a tool for officers to mitigate the possibility of having to use a greater level of force. Category thirteen has to deal with the TASER shockwave, microwave weapons, water cannons, and the long-range acoustic devices, known as LRADs. And I can suffice to say that Oxnard PD does not have any equipment from this category. In category fourteen, we have the following projectile-launch platforms and their associated munitions: forty-millimeter projectile launchers, beanbag, rubber bullet, and specialty impact munition weapon. Like I showed you in the earlier slide, you see at the lower left, the forty-millimeter launcher that can project this type of shell, whether it's tear gas or it's an impact munition. The one above that is actually, has a rotary magazine and can fire, I believe it's six forty-millimeter rounds before having to reload. The item in the middle that you see is actually an item that we would have in our inventory. It's a forty-millimeter shell, and the blue tip is actually made out of foam, so it's a foam projectile that is used as a less lethal tool. The more common type of less lethal tool that we have, though, is found as the beanbag, in the beanbag shotgun. These are shotguns that have been repurposed, and they have been marked with a clearly-marked less lethal label. They're usually given a different color, in this case, orange, and they fire a less-lethal twelve-gauge beanbag projectile up to a distance of approximately seventy-five feet. This allows officers to confront a potentially armed or dangerous suspect at a longer distance and serves as another force option intended to not kill the target. Beanbag shotguns prevent deadly-force encounters. They have been successfully deployed by the Oxnard Police Department for over twenty years, with many instances that prevented would have otherwise resulted in a lethal use of force. So when necessary, there is no alternative to these less lethal weapon systems. And essentially, this beanbag shotgun is firing a small bag with, with, a, with beanbags, with beans in it, that actually, not real beans, but beans that are intended to not injure or not kill the person. Article, or item number fifteen is kind of a catch-all provision, in that this refers to any other equipment as determined by a governing body or a state agency to require additional oversight. In other words, the governing body can elect to add additional equipment types to what is deemed by that organization to be military equipment. And now, a quick recap, as well as previewing some of the next steps that we can expect from the police department. So, the police department is seeking the city council's adoption of the police department's military equipment use policy by ordinance, and the actions that the council may take at this point is that the city council may approve, deny, or request a modification to this policy. The policy, as we have discussed, is manifests itself as section seven zero eight of the Oxnard Police Department's policy manual. This entire policy manual is available on the department's website, and we actually created a specific AB four eighty-one webpage on our, on one of, on our website, and it goes directly to that policy. The police department will also provide an annual report to the city council, along with an annual request to approve this policy. As such, provided that the policy is approved this evening, the first annual report can be expected to go before the council in the late spring of 2023. And prior to us bringing that report to the council for the annual approval, the police department will seek community input on this policy within thirty days of submitting that report to the council. And in closing, the equipment listed in the Oxnard Police Department's policy, section seven zero eight, is critical to the efficiency and the public safety, and there are no other practical alternatives for them. The policy in the ordinance is designed to safeguard the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties. The policy ensures that there are safeguards, including transparency, oversight, and accountability measures. For example, the policy requires that the police department ensures that its personnel comply with the policy. The police department will conduct an annual inventory and review of its military equipment. Any deviations from this policy will be corrected if or when discovered, and members of the public are provided direction how to register complaints for violations. Any military equipment items which result in a reportable use of force will be thoroughly investigated, as is already required, and performed by Oxnard Police Department's robust policies and practices that involve a thorough, multi-layer review. This concludes my report. I will now take questions from the council, and there may be some public comments that I may want to address. Thank you very much.